And filling in for Charlie this evening. Charlie had a conflict, so. All right, I would welcome like to welcome you and call to order the July ninth Port Orchard City Council regular meeting. And I'd like to remind us of our guiding principles and the actions we're about to take. Are we right raising the bar in all of the act of all of our actions? Are we honoring the past but not living in the past? Are we building positive connections within our community and outside partners? And is the decision making process building a diverse equitable and inclusive community? Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, we have a published agenda. We'd like to add. With we our agenda got light, we got some things that got pulled off. Well, we have, we'd like to pull one of next week's work study items forward tonight with your permission and add it as a. A presentation where now I'm not a discussion. And for Bethel Phase One. If somebody wouldn't mind adding, adding that, I would greatly appreciate it. Go ahead, Councilor Deaner.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a discussion of Bethel to our. Did you say go to the order?
Discussion on Bethel Phase One.
Phase one, item D.
You'd be item A and on discussion items.
Oh, that's okay. Discussion items. Sorry, I wasn't following that. Thank you.
In a second. Okay, and I had a second from who? I missed it. From Jay. From Jay, okay. Motion by Councilor Deaner, second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe to add. A discussion item A to as Bethel Phase One. Any discussion, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Meeting got light, so we just wanted to make it productive for you tonight. Made a good decision, though, being. Remote this evening, there is no cooling on the third floor, so. There was sweltering up there this morning. I I wouldn't imagine, wouldn't want to go up there right now. All right, we. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Yes, Mayor, I'd move to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
So a motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, a second by Councilmember Ternary to be approved the agenda as amended. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been set for this evening. We're to our citizen comment period. Is there anyone online, Brandy? And if you are and wish to address the council, use the raise your hand feature and we'll bring you into the meeting. Can you start the video in the chambers if somebody's gonna, Brandy? Or in the hall or in the lobby?
Yes, that is correct.
I'm having trouble hearing you, Brandy.
How about this? Is this better?
Much, much better.
Okay, yeah, there is no members of the public online wishing to speak at this time. There is one person in public. And that person does not wish to speak at this time.
All right, thank you, Brandy. I will close the first citizen comment period. We have a consent agenda that was published. Is there a motion to approve? Councilmember Morrissey.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Approve the consent agenda as presented? Yes, okay, and was there a second?
Yeah, second.
Second, okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Morrissey. And a second by Councilmember Deener to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye. Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We have no presentations. We have no public hearings. We have three business items, first of which is an adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code. Thirteen point oh six point one hundred pertaining to stormwater rate implementation. Mr. Ryan, this is you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Just going back to ordinance number zero three eight dash two three that was previously adopted by this. Council and a brief history is in two thousand twenty-three, the city council adopted the city's. Twenty twenty-three Stormwater and Watershed Comprehensive Plan after collaborative effort. To evaluate our stormwater drainage systems impact on the community. Concurrently, a rate study by FCS Group assessed the existing monthly base rate for storm drainage. And the need for a capital facility charge to support the growth. This plan was adopted late in two thousand twenty-three and updated the base charge based on the study's findings in early two thousand twenty-four. The council made technical amendments to efficiently implement the rates set in two thousand twenty-three. Once again, we have something just to clarify this for our public. During the rate implementation, the staff identified additional technical amendment related to the billing cycles. Similar to our water service charges, storm drainage utility services charge or bill every two months. To avoid applying different rates within a billing cycle, staff requests the clarifying language in P O M C thirteen oh six one hundred. And it will state the rates in effect on the first day of the billing date are charged for the entire billing month. And that is just to clarify for our customers and it is consistent with what we do for water.
Councilmember Ternary.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would. Like to move to adopt an ordinance amending P O M C. Chapter thirteen point oh six point one hundred pertaining to the billing cycle for storm drainage services charges.
Motion by Councilmember Ternary, a second by Councilmember Deener. Are any questions of Mr. Ryan or possibly Mr. Crocker? This is really to benefit our finance department who's. Got to implement this and it actually benefits the the consumer because we're. Kind of kicking the can down the road to their billing date versus of charging it effective. When we implemented it, so it's actually beneficial to us from an administrative standpoint and to the person paying the the rate because. We're delaying when we're charging them. Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
Yes, Mayor, just for clarification, I'm sure for the public also, this is an administrative change and not a change in rates. Those were already voted on and implemented.
That is correct. Other questions or comments? Okay, you'd be voting on the adoption of an ordinance?
I do have a question.
Okay, sorry, Fred.
No worries. I'm wondering if the utility committee has ever considered. Looking into monthly billing as opposed to every two month billing. And the reason for this question is this is probably possibly. One of the largest bills that we see compared to other utilities. And perhaps some. Ratepayers might find it easier to see it every month as opposed to every other month when it is. When it could appear as a huge shock, so I'm just wondering if this is something that's ever been discussed.
Not to mine, no, it might not in my eighteen years, but Noah, I I know we have. Payment arrangements for that plus customer that can't make. And I think we do that quite frequently. You want to discuss or address that?
Well, yes, so to address Councilmember Chang's question, yes, we have discussed this at utility committee. Particularly when we revalued the water rates a few years ago. And we found that it's it's monthly is not the common for utilities. And it would add additional administrative expenses to it. And so we did not proceed forward with further analysis of the monthly billing.
But to to the question or comment I made, I believe for someone that has a hardship with that bill, we. Quite frequently work out payment arrangements with with staff, right?
We do have payment arrangements with citizens when when it's applicable, yes. I don't think the bi-monthly bill itself creates that payment arrangement need. For most customers, we also have budget billing for those that. These are not payment ranges, but they actually want to get on to a budget billing program. We can do that and then they can actually pay their bill monthly. But we're still on a bi-monthly billing cycle. It just would require them to make monthly payments. And towards their account balance. So there is flexibility options to do that and. We have a small amount of customers on the budget billing cycle.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilmember Warden.
Sorry about that, so. It's a utility that's set at a set rate for the entire year. Is it possible for people to pay it? Up front at the beginning of the year for the calendar year? Or does it need to be in their bi-monthly payment?
So we do have some customers that just, again, this is pure preference. They prefer to pay a certain amount. So they budget themselves and say, hey, I want to pay two hundred dollars a month towards my bill and that amount. Remains on the account as a credit towards their bills as they come due. So we do have some customers like that. Sure, we as a utility don't necessarily prefer that. Because again, we are not a bank. We do not want to take people's money and and hold it as a bank would. That they can try to request refunds, so it's not our preference, but we do have a few customers that end up. Do build up a little bit of a credit balance and but for them, it helps kind of smooth out the payments throughout the year.
It is accept it is acceptable payment, though, correct?
Yes, it is. If they make payments, we credit it to their account.
Okay, awesome.
We don't pay him any interest, though. Councilmember Rose Pepe, you have a question?
Well, no, it was more of a statement than when it was asked, has utilities looked at this? And no, we haven't. In this cycle, and I would feel that this would be more matter for the finance committee if they want to revisit it.
Sounds like Noah said we did look at it in the la- last rate study, but we do have alternatives. That would get you to the same for those customers that need it to the same place. Councilmember Shane.
But just as a follow up comment, I'm wondering if there is any benefit to the city of getting revenue every month. As opposed to waiting every two months, for example, I know there's, you know, might that offset the administrative costs? And I for one would would suggest perhaps. Having this as a discussion item at the finance committee if the chair and the other member would be interested in discussing it further.
For I always want just the first part of your question. So again, we have two different cycles of billing, column A and B, they're off. They're off mic month cycles, so switching to a completely monthly system. Wouldn't necessarily be beneficial to the city. From a revenue standpoint, because we already have monthly revenue coming in from cycle A and cycle B.
Yeah, half the city's on one cycle, you know, the other half of the city roughly is on another cycle, so.
And and I get that because we used to do the bills manually ourselves. I mean, I remember the staff were actually stuffing envelopes manually. And it makes sense that they do it every month, but we're having it more of an automated. You know, some people might prefer paying it half of the bill every month. As opposed to a huge bill every other month. I mean, mine, for example, just went up to five hundred dollars and I'm going like, oh, my God, this is huge. So.
Yeah, and maybe something we can look at. Once AMI is fully implemented, again, one of the largest costs is having crews go out there and read meters. And so to do that on a monthly basis, you just double in your crew costs as well as your admin support cost for billing. So right now, we're not there, but perhaps next year after we've fully implemented AMI. And can go to a more efficient way of reading meters, then perhaps the cost could work out. Again, I don't think it's very common, though. Most utilities do by monthly billing.
Yeah, kind of gone down rabbit hole here, so Councilmember Warden.
Exactly the rabbit hole. I was wondering, how is that going? The new way of reading meters, but. I'll take it offline. We can have another topic on that one later. I'm just really curious since he brought it up. How is that going, so?
Just quickly, I exceptionally well, I think we've got, we ordered another block of meters. How many do you know off? Top of your head, Dennis, how far along we are?
Noah, corrects me if I'm wrong, sixteen forty?
Yeah, so that means we got, we've purchased and implemented about forty percent. Of our city's total meters with radio attachments. So that's that's a tremendous savings, so we're continuing to work that and get radio attachments on all our meters and we're continuing to vet. And and work through the timing of the implementation of the AMI itself.
All right, Councilmember Morrissey. Are you taking us farther down the rabbit hole or are you taking?
I'm just going to give you two, two different, different quick pieces. One, I would like to support Councilmember Chang and bring that to Finance Council. I saw it done in Bremerton and I think it definitely helps ratepayers. And that's all, thank you.
All right.
And then again, just want to make it clear that we, if a ratepayer does want that, we do have budget billing which can accommodate that.
Yeah, so we have that, we have we have that accommodation or you can pay. It it all in different forms. So it is available. So anyway, back to the item at hand, which is adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code thirteen point oh six. One hundred pertaining to stormwater rate implementation. All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Where'd item B? Which is adoption of a resolution approving Washington AGO settlement with Kroger as part of an ongoing opioid. Litigation to combat the opioid crisis. Ms. Larson, this is you.
Yes, hello, everyone. Again, I'm Rosemary Larson with Inslee Best and I'm here for. Your regular city attorney, Charlie. This agenda item relates to the ongoing national opioid litigation that has been brought by a number of states. Against the opioid manufacturers. Washington has been actively pursuing this litigation against various entities that manufacture. And distribute the prescription opioids in an effort to combat the opioid crisis. In one piece of this ongoing litigation, the state has reached a settlement with one of the defendants, Kroger. In the amount of approximately forty seven point five million dollars. For the abatement of the opioid crisis in Washington. Counties and cities with a population over ten thousand. Can participate in the distribution of these funds if they sign on to the settlement. The city's allocation would be a small percentage that equates to approximately forty seven thousand dollars. Which could be used for purposes of responding to, dealing with. And helping people recover from the impacts of opioid usage and addiction. I understand from talking with Charlie that the city council has previously approved. Opting in to settlements in a few other segments of the state's litigation. And so similar to those prior cases. If you would like to participate in this settlement, the city needs to opt in. By executing the participation form and the allocation agreement that are in the agenda materials. By August twelve, two thousand twenty-four. If the city council would like to participate in the settlement. A motion would be in order to adopt the resolution authorizing participation in the settlement with Kroger.
Councilmember Warden.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a resolution to authorize. Participation in the settlement with Kroger to combat the opioid crisis in Washington.
Again.
Motion by Councilmember Warden, a second by Councilmember Fenton. Councilmember Deener, you have a question?
Yeah, Rosemary, thank you for the introduction. I I'm just curious about Kroger. And their their role in the opioid crisis. I know that they they have pharmaceutical services that they provide. But they don't, as I understand, they don't direct prescriptions. So I'm just curious about what it was specifically that Kroger was. Or what the deal is about with Kroger.
Well, the claims in the complaint against them were that they. Basically that they grossly misrepresented the risks of the use of these drugs.
Okay.
That they somehow were participating in the representations about what the risks were.
I see, okay.
I'm sorry, I don't have any other information on it than that.
Actually, that tracks with me. As as a pharmacist, you're supposed to represent the medicine accurately, and so I I think I understand what you're saying.
Councilmember Warden.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm curious. I read how the dollars are to be used. I'm curious, we don't have resources. Within the city. Do we push those dollars towards the county or whoever we. Push our resources to, you know, how we collectively do that.
This is, I believe, the third of these type of settlements that we participated in. We do partner with the county. And in turn, then our partnership is with Sahelish. Sahelish Behavioral Health Services, which is covers the entire Olympic Peninsula. To provide. Services that are appropriate services with 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 these funds. So it's it's a it's a partnership with the county and Sahelish Behavioral Health Services.
So we're forwarding these dollars over to them?
Yes, Noah can speak to exactly how it how that mechanism works.
Perfect.
I see Councilmember Morrissey has a question, or I can.
Okay, once you, when we address this question first and the the mechanics of that, is it a reimbursement? They seek reimbursement from us, don't they?
Yeah, so we have an ILA with the county as the mayor's already discussed, the Sahelish Behavioral. Group.
Services, I think.
Health services, and we've had one meeting with them. They they've been late to get, not late, but slow to get their whole program operational as they have other entities participating, so. We're hoping to have another follow up meeting with them over the next month or so, and then essentially they would. Invoice us for those services and we would remit payment for those for the invoice.
Councilmember Morrissey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions as a result to this relates to this result. One, what are the implications, Ms. Larson, if we opt not to participate?
Well, the first one is you wouldn't get forty seven thousand dollars, but you would also, you would not be waiving claims against. Kroger. So I guess that's the other implication is that you would not have waived or released. Claims against Kroger and the city would have the ability to pursue Kroger on its own if it wanted to.
So is the state doing this as a collective and each entity is kind of siphoning off and making their own deal?
Correct, the state takes basically fifty percent. Of the settlement that is alloc- that is, you know, allocated to the state. And then fifty percent of the funds are divided up among the counties and the cities.
Okay. Additionally, then, I'd just be interested, especially with it being Kroger, there's been a lot of. News about Kroger in our area today, so I I don't know how I feel about taking this up tonight, but. Back to some of the questions around the the programs that we do with our partners at Sahelish. Was there a limit on that? Because this is not the first settlement I've even seen in our tenure this year as it relates. To the opioid crisis. Was there a limit on that first contract that we did? Mr. Crocker?
No, I, no, again, what what we discussed as a council and a management team is that we don't have the resources in house to. Provide any type of program, so there is no limit in the ILA. It's truly more of a pass through. And again, it's a collective county effort, so the more entities participate in the effort, I think the more effective our dollars will be contributed to the pot.
Okay, so I think where I'm trying to take this is is when we accept this, do these dollars automatically go towards that contract? As I do believe that I read in an article yesterday. The Kitsap Recovery Center, which is actually located within our city, was just awarded some commerce grants because they were in. Maybe an urgent need to make some improvements to their building or or maybe be closing. Is this something that we could look at? Utilizing some of these dollars in that capacity?
I I don't think we could do their tenant, their their building improvements with these.
No, I, well, it sounds like they got that fixed, but I would love to put resources towards something that is in our.
Yeah. It it would be. Our administer, for us to administer this. Would be burdensome on us. We just don't have capacity to do that, and I don't believe we could take money out of this to administer it. And I think by us partnering with Kitsap County, this is the most efficient way to to. You know, deploy these dollars and and not. Provide, you know, we we want to take these dollars and get them deployed in our community. But, you know, and but not put it in any more. Burden, not create another process, I guess, or need additional staff within the city to administer administer something.
Okay, yeah.
And Councilmember Morrissey, I can look into your specific question, which is. Does the agreement with Sahelish require us to sit in this money? Or I will look into that and get back to you. I don't necessarily believe it does, but that would be our intent, I guess, as we bring this money forward. And I'll have to look and see if we have that in the agreement or not.
Thank you, Mr. Crocker. I'd just like to put out there that my intent would be, I would like to spend those dollars locally where possible within our city. Thank you.
Good point. Councilmember Ternary.
Yeah, just a question for Ms. Larson. If the city elects to opt into this program, does that disqualify us from any future? Litigations against Kroger or any other drug manufacturers or representatives of this?
It wouldn't disqualify you from participating in claims against other manufacturers. There would be a question as to whether it disqualifies you from future claims against Kroger. It would be an inquiry as to whether you reasonably should have known about the claims right now or not. So if it's something that truly arises in the future, you wouldn't be disqualified. But if it's something that where the claim really exists right now, that's something that would be released.
All right, thank you.
Last questions? Comments? Okay, you'd be voting on a resolution approving Washington's AGO settlement with Kroger. As part of the ongoing opioid litigation to combat the opioid crisis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Hearing none, the settlement has been approved. Where'd item C, adoption of a resolution approving the purchase of equipment for the equipment revolving rental revolving fund? Chief Brown, this is you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. Police Department has identified the need to purchase one emergency response vehicle, replacing a vehicle removed from the fleet early due to mechanical issues. Ordinance number zero one two dash two four provided an additional seventy three thousand to fund five hundred to reflect this modification to the fleet. Consistent with the city's procurement procedures policies adopted by resolution number zero three six dash two two as amended. Staff determined that purchasing through a contract procured by the Arizona State Department of Administration or the ADA. Would provide the city with competitive pricing for these purchases. City maintains an interlocal agreement with the ADA to permit the city to purchase goods that are procured by the ADA. Under contract number C one one five dash two two. For this purchase, the city's police department identified PFVT Motors Incorporated. As an approved vendor via ADA contract number CTR zero five nine three two two, known as ADA contract. Staff reviewed the procurement process utilized by ADA for the ADA contract and confirmed the applicable procurement requirements were met. And obtained all necessary documentation regarding procurement. On June twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-four, staff requested and received a quote of forty nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars applicable tax not included. From PFVT Motors, Inc. for one twenty twenty-four Ford Police Interceptor Utility. The estimated tax of nine point three percent or four thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-five cents would be paid upon licensing the vehicle. In Washington State. Further, staff have identified additional expenses associated with emergency response vehicles that are anticipated after delivery of the vehicle and are necessary. Prepare the vehicle for service. These expenses include licensing, the purchase installation of emergency lighting and equipment, and city logo decals. And I apologize for the scripters error, but the these items are all estimated to cost twenty five thousand dollars per vehicle dependent upon the vehicle outfitting. And this is within the eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollar ER and R budget authority patrol vehicle purchases. These items are not included in the ADA contract. Staff have followed the city's procurement policies for these items and have a current vendor contract. The city's procurement policies require city council authorization for purchasing budgeted items that cost thirty five thousand dollars or more. On July first, two thousand twenty-four, staff completed the interlocal agreement purchase checklist for PVFT Motors Incorporated. And confirm this purchase meets RCW thirty nine thirty four zero. and confirm this purchase meets RCW thirty nine thirty four zero three zero and the city's procurement policies. Therefore, staff recommend adopting a resolution providing city council approval of the purchase of a vehicle from PVFT Motors, Inc. under ADA contract number CTR zero five nine three two two.
Councilmember Deener?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution providing city council approval of the purchase of a vehicle from PVFT Motors Incorporated under ADA contract CTR O five nine three two two and authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents to effectuate the purchase.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Deener, second by Councilmember Ternary. The question to the chief, I understand it was a drive train failure and this car was about six months from being replaced. It was going to be replaced in the next budget cycle. Just didn't make any sense to put a whole bunch of money into a car we were going to get rid of in six months or so, so.
I just a quick comment or quick question, I guess. I'm presuming the utility is the same as the Explorer body, right?
Uh, yeah, it's a it's a SUV. Yes, sir. Same as the ones that just showed up.
Okay.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Right, we have.
Yeah, I I I forgot why we have to go with an eighty uh with the Arizona group and not a Washington group.
Uh, well, we normally purchase through Department of Enterprise Services and Ford, when they were having some issues with their own supply chain and then the IAW strike decided that they were going to only a lot of certain number of vehicles for different areas of the country. And we were unable to procure the vehicles through Washington State.
All right, Councilmember Morsi?
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just had a quick question. So I'm just, I want to make sure I'm fully understanding the motion here. Uh, because I show a fiscal impact of about fifty four thousand, but it looks like we're going to need an additional twenty five. We'll come back at a later date for that. And or what all are we getting in that when I started reading the contract, it sounded kind of like the lights for twenty five thousand? Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, so we we have a contract and you'll you'll be seeing an amendment to that contract at the end of the month um with a company called System for Public Safety and they outfit our vehicles. So yes, it's uh all of the wiring, um the insulation of the radios. Um, we have some other security upgrades that we've done. Everything that makes a car a police car is what that that outfitting cost is.
Okay. So that wasn't any of the things that come as the car and, you know, I think when I was looking on all the different checkboxes from the Peoria Group PFVT Motors, none of that's included in the in the build out, right? No lights.
Correct. It we are just buying the the police interceptal vehicle, but it is it's a stock vehicle. Um, it does not have anything that turns it into a police car other than the transmission suspension are are rated for police work.
Okay.
So so the the engine isn't modified at time of purchase?
No, we don't. We do not modify the engine. The the it comes as a police package. So again, it's the suspension, it's the, you know, the the transmission. Um, it's rated for pursuits um as opposed to a Ford Explorer that you would buy from, say, Port Orchard Ford. It's it's not that. So the outfitting is just going to be turning it into a police car outside of, uh, you know, the the guts of the car.
Councilmember Ward?
Yeah, um. Uh, during my day job, uh, I've had the privilege of seeing basically stock cars be turned into police cars. They're completely new cars by the time that they're done with them. It is. They are stripped naked. It is completely a new car uh by the time that they're done with them electronics uh top to bottom. So um when I see that price tag, it doesn't shock me. It's a lot of uh lot of electronics, a lot of technology, a lot of safety gear and um a lot of time that goes into installing all that, so.
Yeah, and we we did just have take delivery of six. And so if any of you are around when uh we have one of the new cars here, you're more than welcome to come down. We'll give you a quick tour.
Right around the block in the backseat. Handcuffs handcuffs included. All right. Any last questions? You know, you'd be voting on adoption of a resolution approving the purchase of equipment for the equipment rental revolving fund five hundred. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the purchase has been approved. All right, we added a discussion item and Dennis has a slide deck that he was going to share. And you guys, uh, at a work study, I think, last month, we we got into a discussion about the center median of Bethel Phase One, and there were some concerns about uh greenery and maintenance costs of that greenery. And so we had the engineers do a deeper dive into that and into our code and our design standards. And Dennis is going to talk about that.
Good evening again. Uh, Brandy is going to uh pull up a slide deck. Brandy, if you're not able to do it, but I can share it. But there it is. So we have, um, I'm going to present tonight side profiles of what it will look like vegetated. What it will look like if it is just stamped stamped concrete in the middle. And then I'm going to share some information on the city's adopted engineering design standards. And then some new information we learned just over a week ago. We received our updated NPDS permit that's effective August first. And there is some criteria in there for adopting a tree canopy plan for the city. So I will go ahead and jump to the next slide. So here is a side profile of the road section if it is just a stamped concrete in the middle. Uh, I will point out that the side roads, the previous slide. There we go. So there is trees uh along the bike lanes on the sidewalk side. It's just for visibility to share so you can see the pedestrian access to the bike lane that the trees aren't represented. But trees are on the sidewalk sides. So the next section.
Hold on, hold on. Now I just want everybody to clear about that six. So between the sidewalk and the bike lane, that six and a half foot section on both sides of the road in this slide and in the next slide will have trees. They're just not depicted in the tree. Okay, so the only deviation in the two slides we're showing you is the eight foot down the center. And in this picture, that is concrete, stamped concrete going down the middle.
Correct.
Everybody, everybody calf following along?
Yes.
Is there any relevance to one bike lane being shown in green and the other in black? Or is that just?
No.
No, no relevance.
Okay.
It was a test and you passed.
Uh, if we go to the next slide, uh, oops, there we go. All right, here's the depiction of the eight foot median with street trees. Um, I do want to point out that uh this is enough access for a street tree. There were some concerns raised earlier about the ability for uh access for maintenance vehicles. Our engineering team pointed out that you are able to do a taper and close the bike lane so you can shift traffic into the bike lane. Proper signage would be needed, of course, but you would be able to channel uh maintenance vehicles in the center of the road next to that center median.
Did everybody follow what he's saying there? So for if we went this route, that fourteen foot lane, we would put a roll of cones down the middle of it and some signage, and then we would be able to work in in that median. Um, utilizing the bike lane as a traffic lane.
Okay.
And and we would only need to do that on one side. The other side would remain open because we can access both sides from one lane. So I think we're ready for the next slide. So this is our city design standard that's been adopted by city council. Uh, there is a slight deviation, um, and this is for right away purposes for the design. But uh we are going with an eight foot center median instead of a nine foot. But it does show uh and state that a planting strips need to be vegetated per our adopted city standard. And there's a little bit of additional information on the next page, but you'll see trees in the middle, trees on the shoulder in both of this. And so if we just go to the next page, if there's no other questions and just a little bit more information about street trees landscaping, reference to the Port Orchard Municipal Code. And then see there, it says planting strips are required along all classifications of streets. And a little bit about the design. And then we do have adopted street trees that basically tells us the appropriate tree for the environment that it's in, so it doesn't buckle sidewalks and has no overhead restrictions with utilities. So is there any questions so far?
Yes.
Is the um, oh, now, how are how are you watering all these plants? For I got two questions.
They they'll be irrigated. They'll be uh in ground irrigation for these.
Same way, same way we do Tremont. We have a we have a drip system in the ground. The the waters, the the vegetation and the trees.
Right, okay. And then on the best Bethel Place One, is is this what you're putting all the way down Bethel until you run into a roundabout where you want?
Correct. Yes, it would for all intents and purposes, it would look exactly like Tremont with one fewer lane on each side.
Mm hmm, okay.
For for visual visualization. So Councilmember Warden, do you have a question?
Yeah, uh. Ooh, is it possible to put trees in there and hardscape it both?
I I do think that there could be a combination.
The I think that's more uh practical. Um, I'm gonna try and be as polite as possible, but um that's saying a lot. Pottery Kitsap Boulevard looks horrible. I mean, absolutely horrible. The weeds are four feet tall along the whole entire middle of those roads. If we can't maintain, I keep saying it, what we currently have, why do we want to add more? And it's challenging. It's really challenging to drive through there and see four feet tall entire center of the roads full of weeds. Um, I do not want to spend money and have Bethel look like pottery. I do not want to spend money and have Bethel look like uh Kitsap Boulevard. So um if we can eliminate as much maintenance as possible, uh, that would be, that'd be my vote. I I I agree with the trees. I think uh my own patio in my own home, I have a concrete patio with a tree in the center of it. Um, definitely, that's doable. I would like to see trees along there with hardscape if it's possible. That's all I have.
I I I do hear you. Uh, we, the the way Tremont was constructed with the irrigation system and the evergreen, you know, type, uh, it's a mount called a mountain laurel. Um, once it's established, it has been fairly low maintenance, you know, it doesn't, it isn't grass and it is paramount, you know, in the first three to five years, you know, as as the plants are getting established to keep the weeds out of it. Or you're right, it it looks like crap and um, you know, those other those other areas that you're referring to, we don't have any type of irrigation system. There aren't any real plantings in those. South Kitsap Boulevard does have some trees in it, but it's more of a bike, a bike, supposed to be a bio swell uh in those. I I don't like the design of it either myself, but Councilmember Rosa Petty?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I concur with what Eric's uh saying. Uh, my concern, uh, while I do like the trees, my concern is as we put additional vegetation in there without a second lane. Well, we're trying to encourage more people to use their bikes. Uh, blocking off part of the bike lane for any portion of time discourages that. Uh, so I try to do anything that we could to minimize the amount of of labor and upkeep that we would use. However, that being said, uh, we know we we know we don't want what our sister city next door has. So I I'm willing to go down the road, realizing that we may have to change later uh on that. Tremont's been a blessing. Uh, I agree with Eric that pottery is an embarrassment.
Councilmember Morsi?
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I I'm hopefully not just jumping ahead because I guess I'm 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 wondering, are we talking tonight specifically about Bethel? Or changing city design standards? That would be question one. Maybe I should stop there.
Yeah, we are. We are talking about Bethel, the the and the design and trying to keep, we're trying to keep the design moving on Bethel and and not slow our design team down because we want to get to construction as soon as possible on the project. And that's so.
Uh, questions two and three may kind of go together because I think I too agree with the sentiments of Councilmember Warden. Uh, and I and I want to make sure that Bethel looks just as beautiful as as Tremont. Uh, but what would the difference in costs be? Uh, would be uh something that would be uh, I I I would like to take into consideration for that. And then uh for putting it in and then the cost for uh uh maintenance, right? We uh, we have a contract to do that outside. Would we be looking to add to that contract or will we be taking on that maintenance internal?
To to answer your maintenance question, I think the design team can answer that question as far as the uh building cost. I I can't answer that, but off the top of my head, but um, you know, as far as the maintenance contract we have on Tremont is an exceptional bargain for considering what our staff costs. At some, every time we add, if we added this section of roadway and it was it was green, I think step one would be evaluating adding on to that contract. But at some point, it probably makes sense for us to bring that in house when it grows to a certain point. But until it grows to that point, we're better off to contract out and, you know, and utilize a contract service, you know, as long as it may, as long as that makes financial sense. But we'll look at that every time we renew renew that contract. And anytime we add work to it, that what, you know, when when do we reach that tipping point where we bring it in house? Mr. Ryan, do you have an answer possibly on the construction cost?
I I don't have on the construction cost, but I did want to offer something up that uh we do have the ability to include in the contract when we go for construction uh a maintenance agreement for the first couple of years of these landscapes, which have proven very successful in the past for myself.
Councilmember Deener?
So I share some of the concerns that have been heard tonight and and um, you know, I I love the way Tremont looks. I think stamped concrete is rather uninspiring. Uh, it's but at the same time, I think my last discussion uh on this with the council was what if we were to look at sort of some street art that you you can find on medians if you take some time and and Google median art and median developments and stuff? There's a lot of, a lot of good things out there that would be rather unique for a city in our area if we were to look at some low heights artistic development or, you know, doesn't have to be anything terribly fancy, but um so that we're looking at sort of a um, a broken up median that has trees, maybe some stamped concrete, maybe some art and more stamped concrete than trees. Something along that, along those lines, um, just to give Port Orchard some unique uh feel and and characteristics that aren't seen in in other cities or I've not noticed in other cities.
Like that.
In the end, I I I will, like Jay said, I'll go with with, you know, what we think is best and what will work. Um, but I want to make sure we discuss all these options as well.
Jay have an additional comment?
I apologize. I forgot to lower my hand.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we we want the trees and that's part of our, you know, standards and it's going to be part of our stormwater permit for the tree canopy. Um, count, oh, just a second. Councilmember Ternary?
All right, I thought you forgot about me for a second. So, you know, I I also want to to actually agree with the Councilmember Warden. You know, pottery doesn't look good. South Kitsap Boulevard is also not some of our finest bio swell work. Uh, but but what we've been doing in the city in the last, say, ten to fifteen years uh from the Tremont forward looks very good at at this amount of time. And that includes having the drip systems, the irrigation down the middle. So I think I think I'm leaning towards sticking with uh I'll be happy to look at other other options as well, but a concern that I have sticking towards the the tree uh center line, center section. But the concern that I have is we have design standards now. We're having to, we're requiring our uh constructors and developers to adhere to. And should we not be held, holding ourselves to those same design standards that we hold our developers that are working with us in the city too? Uh, that's a concern that I have that, that we should all consider before we take this too much farther. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mark, and that, and that, that's a, that's a fair point, that we shouldn't be taking shortcuts that we, you know, and, and the things we've built it in the last ten years are, are beautiful and I think are, are setting a new standard for our city. You know, I don't like anybody on this screen, uh, approved or was part of the processes that created, uh, you know, I don't know when in the sixties or seventies, um, you know, pottery was built, uh, there we are putting that road on the diet and some of that's going to get addressed, but, um, you know, there's, there's things we can do with, with our summer hires, uh, this summer to, to address some of that that we've just gotten on, on board, so. Uh, Councilmember Morrissey.
Yeah, can I just quick ask Councilmember Turner a, a follow-up to his statement? Are you talking specifically not following the code, the, the, the median smaller or, or the design standards in having the trees?
No, looking at a design standard that doesn't adhere to the tree, tree lines on both the sides and down the center aisles that are city s- standards are requiring.
Mr. Mayor? I just wanted, there was another slide and, and just for information.
Okay.
Jump ahead and it's just the stormwater, this is, this is hot off the press, so this just came out, I believe about a week ago. So this is stating that we have to have a plan in place by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Uh, tree canopies, vegetation, they absorb runoff stormwater. So that's the purpose of this, so the canopy is critical for this long-range planning for our storm system.
Councilmember Warden.
Yeah, you can, um, gonna piggyback off this slide. You can achieve both, you can achieve, uh, the tree canopy, you can achieve the aesthetics, the appearance. Um, it would look beautiful having trees lined up through Bethel. You would achieve the MDS permit requirements, um, that will be in place. You don't have to do that with, uh, greenery going through the middle. You can have a combination of both, of hardscape and the trees. Um, we're saying that if we go into it with greenery down the middle and that's what we're going to hold firm to, um, I would really like to expand that contract that we have with the Tremont, our roundabouts. Um, I've been in Redmond, I've been in Bellevue, I've been in Bremerton, Kitsap County, our roundabouts are nice. We have nice roundabouts that are very well maintained. Um, the lawn looks great, the other ones, the vegetation looks phenomenal. Um, I want to maintain our contracts if we're going to hold to it, I'd rather not. I'd rather not do a tree canopy and hardscape, but, um, if we're going to do that, I would really, really like to expand our contract with, uh, the company currently doing it.
Yeah, well, we, we have to put it out to bed every few years. Yeah, we, that is absolutely would be our intent and to, to Mr. Councilmember Morrissey's point. At some, you know, we, we analyze it every time. It's, it's some point it could make sense to have, because, you know, we build a Bethel out all the way down and it's this, you know, I mean Tremont looks fabulous, that's what I think our commercial corridor should look like, not a concrete jungle. Just the asphalt that we have to drive on and, and then be aesthetically pleasing, um, but, you know. So Councilmember Fenton.
Yeah, I really agree with, um, Councilmember, uh, Deener, I would think it would be so unique and bring something, uh, different to our community for that road for, um, artwork. I think that would be really cool. Oh my God. Yeah, so anyway, that was just my comment.
So I'm hearing trees and then I'm hearing a bunch of different directions. The, our standard says the greenery and that's, that's what we're pointing to.
But developers can ask for deviations from those standards, is that correct?
Mr. Bond?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And do we grant them?
That is ultimately up to the city engineer.
Okay.
So, um, I don't know Dennis, if you want to take a swing at that, but I mean, we would be accommodating both tree scatement and hardscapement in one scenario. Um, I'd like to see hardscapement that is a little bit nicer than just stamped concrete. Um, that to me signals we've just given up on making the median look nice or grass.
This, I guess, how difficult Dennis is it going to be to get some costs? The difference between green, uh, uh, plants, stamped concrete and some sort of a median that has, um, well, it, it's, it's going to be a s- a stamped form. The, the ones I've seen in the median, it's, it's some sort of an artistic.
Yeah.
Stamped.
And I'm thinking of something on top of that.
I, we can take a stab, I'm sorry.
In terms of art, something on top, mounted on top of the stamped concrete.
I, I will do say that we did have some preliminary conversations with our design team. Um, so anything in this area is considered at the foul zone. Uh, we, if somebody hits it and it's not breakaway or if it's not rated to be in a road prison, we're going to have liability. Um, if we did anything other aside from, um, our roundabouts are going to be our centerpieces, we have all the opportunity to do art pieces, focal points, uplighting that will pre-wire in the, the medians. Um, if we start talking about a hardscape other than stamped concrete, uh, I've seen recessed boulders, your, your price is going to, um, skyrocket. Um, just the extra labor involved with the finish work.
And you said recessed boulders as in they're sunken and then cemented around?
Yeah, you've, I've seen, you see those every now and then where there'll be a couple inches above. Um, and, and just getting back, um, I have a maintenance background, so I've been on both sides of this, uh, conversation. Um, the design element of a vegetated, um, divider median is also safety, it's a deterrent from people hopping the curb and driving through it. So that's just another piece of this discussion.
Yeah, that, that greenery that's two feet tall looks like you got a three-foot barrier when you really don't. Um, where the, that stamped concrete, you know, in your big truck, you can go over the top of that.
I, I think to kind of wrap my thoughts up, I, I'd have to see some cost estimates for me to give you one way or another. I can tell you some of my preferences based off of visual acuity, but, um, I, I, I'd like to see some costs.
I'd like to see more visuals as well.
Visuals as far as?
Well, you know, what, what, what do we have in mind?
We're spending money every time we put our design team to, to work on that.
I was thinking in terms of what, what Dennis may have in mind for stamped concrete.
Okay.
Something simple.
Okay, so you'd like, you'd like a, an overhead view of the stamped concrete with trees down the middle of it and then an overhead view of that median with the greenery in it, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
It should be relatively easy to put together and then a cost for each type of treatment, we're, either way, we're putting irrigation in it.
Right.
Um, because of the trees, so that there, there isn't really going to be any savings there. Um, it's just the plants versus concrete. Cost of plants versus cost of concrete and the finish work on the concrete. Is that, is that what you're going, wanting to see? Okay.
Well, I'll just add, I, I don't know if there's support beyond a couple of us for any sort of breakaway, low-profile art that we would put in the median.
Um, I, I do recall Dennis talking to the design team about that and it didn't seem to meet traffic standards.
Hmm, it's interesting because it's, there's pictures of it in, in other places, as in other medians.
So I, I think I've seen it in other situations and we did have an example of one and, uh, our assistant city engineer actually happened to design it where it was like, uh, kind of some, uh, metal waves in the center. Uh, that's, that was considered a divided highway, so I talked to Christian, it was a fifty mile an hour road and I believe the curbing was like twelve inches, so this curbing is only going to be sixty-eight inches. So it was a, it was a divided highway, fifty miles an hour is what it was considered.
So that a much taller median.
Yeah.
But, but I, I will ask the question, if there's any examples for this type of.
Yeah, something that sets us apart from our peers is what I was hoping for.
All right, we'll try to, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Warden.
Yeah, one last, um, I'll end with this. Um, I'd really like to see, uh, maybe there's, you guys are planning on it, I haven't seen it, um, but it'd be really nice to see like some filteras yeah, involved in there, you know, where you have your catch basins, you just have some through curbs. Um, that would meet some, uh, water quality as well. Um, wouldn't meet low-impact development, but it would definitely meet, uh, water quality if we could throw some filteras in there along the way and those are really nice trees, you know, that last several years before you change them out. Uh, that would be, uh, it's aesthetically pleasing, the, the bases of those, there's really nice metal, nice designs uh, that you can get in those with the trees in the center. Um, and those are just placed right where your drains would be, right where the through curbs are. Has there been any talk of that, of filteras going in there or?
We're, uh, we're still at sixty percent, so we haven't gotten to that detail yet, that, so we're waiting for this piece.
I hear you, all right, all right, I, I, I'm jumping way ahead, so.
No, no, it's okay, it's, it's good feedback that I'll provide ahead of time.
All right, thanks.
So I don't know that we'll get this back, we'll try to get it back for, uh, it's, this item is on the agenda for the work study next week. If we can get some answers by then, if not, we'll bring it back as a discussion at the end of the month. We are, we are goal, so, okay, thank you for your time tonight and, and uh, allowing us to add an agenda item here on the fly, just saw we had extra time tonight, so wanted to make good use of it. Uh, council committee report, um, economic development tourism, uh, I see you meet, you met today?
No, it was supposed to be yesterday, uh, uh, we had staffing issues and so, uh, staff had asked to cancel this month. We will meet again August twelfth.
Okay, thank you for that. Utilities did not meet this evening, uh, due to Jackie Brown's retirement. Finance is meeting next week. Transportation meets end of the month. Land use, it says to be determined. And.
Actually, we, we didn't, um, uh, have a report.
On land use?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, we met the other day, there was a, uh, last week and, uh, we primarily focused on two items. Uh, one is, uh, we've asked for some, uh, legal, uh, information regarding, uh, or variances of code to allow people to make, uh, changes to their house and I'm sorry that I'm, uh, not having the right words, uh, on that, but we're asking for some legal information before we go ahead down the road.
Not, non-conforming uses.
Yes, thank you, non-conforming uses, I appreciate that, so more information to follow, uh, on that. Uh, the second thing is, and I thought I'd send an email out and I apologize because I looked at my sent file and I hadn't. Uh, and, and I'm sure Nick will elaborate a little bit, but for all council members, uh, we do have our comp plan coming out. Uh, it needs, uh, to be reviewed, uh, specifically uh, in the areas of capital facilities, transportation and, uh, housing and land use. The reason I bring this up and, um, again, Nick will elaborate a little bit, is because we also have, we'll be going into budget very soon. Uh, the comp plan is something that is very, you know, is almost as, you know, like a strategic roadmap for us. Uh, so I implore everybody on the council to start taking a look at it and a bite of the apple because we wait till the last minute, uh, it is a very thick document and, uh, it'll be very difficult, so thank you.
All right, um, outside agencies, I have one, uh, the last transit board meeting. Uh, a few things, uh, were discussed there and voted on, one is, uh, the fast ferries, the, the state raises their rates, um, virtually every year and Kitsap Transit has not raised fares on the high-speed ferries since their implementation, so the, the, as of October first, uh, the, the high-speed operation will see a two-dollar increase to the fares and one positive, uh, from this, from right now, the monthly pass for ferries is one pass and buses is another and now that ferry pass will include a bus, the bus ticket. And so that, and the goal there is to incent people to ride the bus down to the ferry, uh, and, and, uh, for your commute and to, so incentivize, uh, bus ridership. The grand opening of the Trail, Silverdale, New Transit, Silverdale Transit Center was here a couple of weeks ago and I participated in that. And, uh, Spalsbow just received a grant for, uh, their new transit center and a seventeen million dollar grant for Kitsap Transit received, uh, for the Spalsbow Transit Center. And that fund, just like Silverdale, it'll have inductive charging for, which is the, the contacts like your cell phone uses, um, that come up from the ground, uh, for the bus, uh, that center will have that also. And, uh, it also has funding for two double-decker electric buses, so from between Spalsbow and Bay Ridge Island will be running double-decker electric buses. And John, do you have something for outside agencies?
Uh, I'd kind of, so I didn't know if this would fall under, it, it falls under, uh, lodging tax a little bit. Uh, actually attended a, uh, very informal meeting for the first one, uh, up at the county, uh, uh, chambers this afternoon. Um, we pulled together a group of folks, um, from throughout the county, including uh, law enforcement to our chamber partners, to, uh, KEDA, to talk about Seattle FIFA World Cup twenty twenty-six and a Kitsap Task Force membership, uh, and there's some LTAC implications, uh, and some asks uh, on behalf of this, uh, uh, group as it forms. So, uh, I'll probably be asking for some time at the study session next week and I'll get some, uh, information over to you and staff, Mayor. Uh, but I know that LTAC will be getting up and running probably next month, I'll touch base with, with Randy, but uh, there is some implications and things to figure out before we, we, we put that out to the group.
Okay. Um, anything else from council committee reports? Okay, I'm going to jump to the mayor's, uh, report. Um, where our design team is working on the Bay Street reconstruction and, uh, there's been discussion about lowering the speed limit on Bay Street downtown from twenty mile, twenty-five miles an hour down to twenty miles an hour. Uh, we are in this, because it's a state highway, we're having conversations with WashDOT in regards to that, but that's take, that speed limit change is also consistent with our downtown master plan, so as we make those pedestrian improvements to accommodate our community center, um, I just wanted to communicate that with you that we're having conversations with WashDOT about lowering that speed limit by five miles an hour downtown. Making it a little more pedestrian friendly. Um, let's see here. Brandy, could you share that slide? We also had a meeting with our design team about the community center and the shoreline work. And, um, the state is kind, is asking us to, so one, uh, we had thought at one point we would have a, a beach, beach access point and be, because of the tides and the, the, um, and the currents that we get through there, the size of the rock that will be required in that area are not conducive, uh, to a, to a path, uh, down to there, so we've had to back away from having that path uh, down there left of the, uh, to the west. So if you scroll down please, Brandy, to, just so we can see those two, so, opt, choice, choice one is what we're at, so we have to have a lighted mitting grate on our observation deck along the pathway on the water. We would really like it to be solid concrete and then light admitting, you, you know, whatever percentage we have to have be light admitting. Um, we're getting pushback from, which state agency is this, Nick, that's, is it Fish and Wildlife?
Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah, so Brandy, please scroll back to where you were. Um, and so they are pushing for, um, Um, and so they are pushing for, um, this striped effect, and we don't think that makes sense. And we're pushing back, but ultimately, um, they're the ones that have to approve our permit, so we could end up with the second choice. We don't want the second choice and we're really advocating and making a case for the first choice, and I just want you guys to see those two alternatives, um, that, uh, we're seeing. So, so along our, be our, our new seawall and there's an observation deck that's out there in, in front of the community center is, is what this is.
So, so the infill between the grates is concrete and on choice number two? Okay.
Yeah, or it's a solid surface, it could be steel. Um, I, I, it doesn't make sense to us, but.
And that's what they, that's what they want?
Yeah.
Over choice number one?
Yes.
Well, Mayor, remember there was a, um, there was an even different choice that had perpendicular striping to the shoreline with bigger stripes. I think that, that is the third choice if we had to go there, but, um,
It was, it was worse than this.
Great over that.
Yeah, it was worse than two, the, the aesthetics of it, so.
Can, can, can you explain why they prefer number two over one?
They're interpreting the code, the state, the, their state regulations that this is what's required and we don't agree with them.
I don't think the tribes would agree with them either.
Yeah, so anyway, so we're pushing back. I'm just sharing information from a meeting we had. Um, we're really advocating that we get choice number one, but, um, we don't get to approve our own permit on this. Um, farmer's market, I'm just, uh, share some data from the farmer's market. It's been a uh, they're very successful season so far. They've got a hundred and ten vendors on an average. They've got fifty-five vendors. And they have had three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in sales, uh, uh, during, since April thirteenth and uh, more than sixteen thousand people have visited our farmer's market this summer, so just wanted to share that little bit of data with you. Um, I, I think you saw Charlie's email and probably the AWC bulletin about the grants pass decision. Uh, and, uh, you know, and really doesn't change much in, in the, in our practices here in Port Orchard. We had, um, uh, you know, a detailed process, yeah, in, in offering services to folks, um, that in most cases didn't want our services and then we had a progressive process, um, to, uh, you know, to remove an encampment. Um, it just, this, this new court decision really puts our process on much firmer ground than it, than it was previously, so Councilmember Deaner?
So is it, is it firming up our processes because of what we've adopted? Or would there be a menu of alternatives if we wanted to relook at this entirely? And I'm not suggesting that, I'm just curious.
We just, um, the biggest challenge to any of this is, is shelter beds and, and my old hell shelter needs to be opened, you know, and, and most folks that were offered services don't, they just want to be left alone. Uh, I, you know, and that's not, uh, an acceptable alternative, you know, um, in, in our public, in our public spaces. So that's not, that's the process we're working and this grants pass decision, um, gives us, you know, we can, we can be firmer in those, in those, in those actions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're still working, uh, Noah and I on the, we got some feedback, I gave you those, that criteria for the rental assistance, uh, we're hoping in the next week or two to get a, a draft agreement, uh, to KCR for them, for their review. Uh, and don't forget next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, we've got the John Clausen event, uh, at two o'clock down in front of the library. Uh, hope to see, uh, many of you there. Um, that concludes my mayor's report. Uh, department heads, uh, Noah, do you have anything to share?
I do not tonight. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Wallace?
I do not have anything to report tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Bond?
I just wanted to share with the public, um, I, I sent an email to the full city council last week concerning our office of financial management population. And, uh, we grew to eighteen thousand three hundred residents and Mark Fournier has been out and he's already got all the signs updated at the entrances to the city. And, um, I, the, the only other statistic of note that I wanted to share is that um, our current population is based on a ninety-one and a half percent occupancy rate, meaning that eight and a half percent of our housing units are currently vacant. And so that's a little bit above normal, but we also had, uh, a large apartment complex get uh, final occupancy in March, and so I think that tracks with how long it takes to lease up one of these new, uh, buildings, and I think that uh, once we get closer to a ninety-five percent occupancy, which is more, uh, normal, um, that probably, that'll probably bring five hundred more residents into the city, uh, as those units get filled up. And that's all.
Chief Brown?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, the only thing I have tonight, just, uh, one of the questions that came up about Salish Behavioral Health. Um, we do partner with them, with the police department when we have behavioral health issues, um, in the city, so the funding is, is also gonna go to some of the work in the city that we do when we have, uh, incidents or we have people that we need to refer.
Thank you, Chief.
Oh, yeah.
All right, Mr. Ryan?
Good evening again. Uh, Brandy, can I screen real quick?
What was that?
Oh, am I able to share my screen?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to share, says someone else is sharing.
The clerk is.
Um, here we go. I just wanted to, uh, share some updates, some marina. This is streaming in our lobby now with the, uh, uh, new TVs that are installed, so just a little bit of an overview of the marina project. Um, it's, it's, but, uh, I wanted to give you a quick glimpse. Um, can everybody still hear me?
Yes, yep, this is not moving.
Okay, there it goes again. Oh, is it not working?
It's, it's, yeah, now it is.
Yes.
Okay, so we're getting some great shots. That's enough. If you're in City Hall in the lobby, these will all be streaming for your enjoyment and we will continue to update these. We've also taken delivery of a new home. So I hope that by next meeting, we will be able to share some footage of our projects from different angles, but this is gonna be for our public as well. Um, I'll keep talking while it's trying to stream. Um, one, one thing that I brought to the mayor is, uh, we are going to start a, uh, weekly frequency sweeping of the downtown core along Bay Street. Uh, looking to see if we could have somebody blow the sidewalks of our local downtown core ahead of our street sweeper, just to give the downtown core, um, some better aesthetic appears as we can. Uh, we've heard that's very important to a lot of our residents and business owners in this council as well. And the last thing, and I'm done streaming, so it doesn't seem to work very well for me. Uh, the last thing, uh, council member Warden brought up, uh, the desire to, um, tour our operations center. Uh, we are going to propose, um, that we do this on August thirteenth at five PM and we could have our ops, our two new, two new ops supervisors for operations and utilities along with our operations manager to give us a tour. That will give the council members to, to all the equipment we and sit on one time with the staff for a question and answer period, and so something we hope that everybody can attend and, uh, just wanted to see the availability would be for August thirteenth at five PM before council.
So what we're proposing is meeting us out at, at the shop at five o'clock, spending, you know, up to an hour and then, and then, uh, heading off back to your, wherever you're gonna do your Zoom meeting. Go ahead.
Is staff, is staff gonna be present or are they already leave for the day at five PM?
Yeah, it would be, the, the, the line staff would be gone, but the, the three, the, the manager and the two supervisors will, will be there. But it'll give you a, get you a chance to see kind of how crowded, you know, the equipment that we have. Um, kind of the need, what we have there for space, um, and, and then talk to the, the ops folks that, and, and meet those folks that are there.
Does utilities always meet on the second Tuesday at five?
That, that's the regular schedule, but we could, we can move that if, if, uh,
That's the only thing I see.
What's that?
That's the only thing I see on the, uh, conflict, so I didn't want somebody to be able, not be able to participate.
So is there a desire for other folks to see the, the, uh, the operations facility? Okay.
We did a tour some years ago and I thought it was pretty worthwhile. I'd like to see it again and I'm available on, on that date and time.
If we shift the utilities meeting, we'll be able to do that.
Yeah, maybe four thirty?
Uh, no, we have a little bit longer, so I'll work with, uh, Dennis on that and get a, and check with the other, uh, committee.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll, uh, so pencil that in your calendars, five o'clock and we'll meet you out at the shop. You guys, everybody know where the shop is? Out on Lumpson, in the, in the industrial park? Okay. All right, thank you, Dennis. And, uh, I think we're up, fully staffed on seasonals finally in the last week or so.
Yes, I believe we only have one maintenance worker position vacancy and that's because an employee left. Um, so we did, we did, uh, have acceptance of all of our internal recruitments for the missions that we created. That is complete.
Yep, so, uh, darn close to being fully staffed for the first time this year. All right, uh, that's, I didn't miss any directors, did I? Okay, we're to our next citizen comment period. If you're online and wish to address the council, when you use the raise your hand feature and the clerk will bring you into the meeting. And our member of the public, um, let the clerk know if you're wishing to address the city council.
Uh, we have one person in public and they do not wish to speak at this time and then no members online.
Okay, we'll close the second citizen comment period. Good of the order. Guys have anything for the good of the order?
Yes. Oh, yeah, we had the, um, uh, coffee with the council members on Saturday and then I'll still get some more information to, um, Brandy, but it was a, it was kind of slow, but it was still very good. It was with, um, council member, um, Morcy and, um, Trenary. And just a few things, um, Kelly, he was kind of curious about maybe a cleanup at the Blackjack Creek, uh, going uh, um, up Sydney, that he was saying like there's a lot of still homeless kind of garbage down there. And Mark, you can, you know, say anything more, because I know I kind of said, oh, Mark kind of lives out that way. And he was talking to Mark too. And then also two lovely ladies, the, um, was a mother and a daughter, um, McKenna and Courtney. They, um, were very pleasant and they got their, uh, jotted their information down because they would like to volunteer for the city, uh, you know, whatever we need a volunteer for. And then the last one, it was over, I got this information when I was over at the farmer's market. But, um, someone was inquiring and I said we're, we're on it, but I didn't know when, but it was the crosswalks that are, um, oh, my dog better not bark, um, over by Bliss in the, the, um, where the old live theater was, the, um, the crosswalk is like only halfway there. It's really faded out and then you go down a little further where the yacht club is. That's one's only half of it too and faded out and I know, I think we're gonna be getting on it to put those.
I don't believe those are ours. I think Dennis would need to let them know the state. That's state highway, so the state, it's not part of our contract, uh, for thermal blasting.
Oh, well, too bad we didn't have them when they were here.
Well, the, the construction project's different than their, their, their ongoing maintenance.
Okay, then yeah, maybe we'll get on that then. Okay. That was it.
Okay, and Councilmember Rose Pepe?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have two items. Uh, one is, uh, just a reminder for the public uh, that we, uh, have a primary coming up and, uh, please, if you haven't registered to vote yet, please contact the, uh, Kitsap County, uh, Auditor's Office. Uh, the second thing for the committee, if we can get just a, uh, quick thumbs up or thumbs down at next week's um, work study, I'd like to, uh, carve out about fifteen minutes to, uh, talk about fireworks again after, uh, several discussions with, uh, citizens of the city of Port Orchard and some, uh, very strong text messages that I received on my phone. So I would like to, uh, have a discussion on that, if that's okay with everybody.
I'm, I'm good with that.
So, Councilmember Warden?
Yeah, thanks a lot, uh, for, um, letting me speak. Um, Sarah Butler, she reached out and, uh, let me look right here, apologize to you guys. July twentieth is gonna be Bay Street Beautification Day. Um, everybody and your friends are invited to, uh, join in. It will be from nine to one. And, uh, you're encouraged to meet at Kitsap Regional Library, uh, at nine AM. So Sarah Butler is setting that up. And that's July twentieth, so.
Thanks, Eric. Fred?
I just had a, a couple of things, um. I attended a Port Orchard Kiwanis meeting at the United Methodist Church and this doesn't directly affect Port Orchard, but it was exciting to hear a speaker from Kitsap Mental Health talk about Evergreen Bright Start. And John, I think you've heard about it. Um, basically what it is, is it's, it's a, it's services for young people that are aging out. I believe their, um, target age was like sixteen to eighteen, eight, eighteen to twenty-four. And, uh, they have twenty-four units at an apartment in Bremerton, so basically, um, it's like they're retrofitting an apartment building to provide these living spaces and they're also gonna be providing services. So it's, it's just something that is kind of exciting. They are the first one in the county. Um, they are willing to use this model elsewhere, so in case there is a building that might become available in Port Orchard. Uh, some people thought that Amici House, which is on Harrison and DeKalb might be similar and that's not quite the same thing, but it is, um, it is also resi- residence for young people. And the, the second item is, I just wanted to float the idea to council members that, um, it, again, excuse me, see if there's any interest for, um, sort of an informal meeting of council members where we can discuss things that are not on any immediate agenda. Um, I know that it, this came up actually in some of the coffee with council where we are limited to three council members that there are topics that we may want to speak about with more than three council members. And I would suggest that if there is interest, we could maybe pick a Saturday, maybe in the fall, which is just around the corner. And just discuss it. Um, the mayor would certainly be invited, but you don't have to attend, Rob. Um, I, I also want to say that Rob does a really good idea of, a really good job of keeping us on task with our budget and with our current work schedule. And so this, the, this type of meeting would be for items that are not on any, anyone's schedule, but just sort of concerns about council that you might want to talk about, that we just never fitted on any of our agendas. So if you are interested, um, I guess let me know via email.
The challenge of that, Fred, is you're, you're, uh, creating a public meeting which has to be recorded, created minutes. You can't just have a informal gathering of our city council, but I'll, I'll defer to the, the attorney on that.
Well, that, that's correct. That was well put. It would be, if, if there's more than a major, if there's a majority of the council present discussing city business, it'll be a meeting.
Yes, it would be noticed. Uh, when I say informal, I just meant that it was not similar to any meeting that we currently do, but it would, I would expect would be noticed to the public. It would need to be recorded in some fashion. And it would probably need to be at City Hall, but it's, I just want to float an idea for an additional kind of meeting if council is interested.
Hey, Fred. Heidi had her hand first.
Oh, oh, okay. Um, I would be kind of interested and if it's when you publish, um, something, because I know like how, um, Brandy says, oh, this isn't, uh, they're like, we're all together doing some activity. So wouldn't this fall under that if we do a public notice instead of it being so formal?
We, we have special meeting provisions that we, we would have to follow, but, um, yes, my question for Fred is, is a work study, um, not adequate enough to kind of roundtable, um, loose ideas?
I, I think Scott, that a work study would be an appropriate opportunity. Um, we haven't had the ability to schedule any, any open topics at a work study though, because we seem so focused on our work plan. ability to schedule any, any open topics at a work study though, because we seem so focused on our work plan. That's why I'm proposing an additional type of meeting.
Well, also, I believe in our, I don't have it in front of me, but in our section in the Port, Port Orchard Municipal Code, which I understand we can change uh that when we do have a meeting, uh the mayor is, for lack of better words, our facilitator. I don't think we can change that if we're gonna have a formal meeting. Again, I would defer to our attorney on that. Uh, I believe that much like I asked to bring up fireworks next week, uh there's nothing that prevents us from go, adding items to the work study uh or adding another meeting. I believe that not following uh our code and how we do our meetings uh leaves us open to a lack of transparency with folks. And I seriously have problems with that. Thank you.
I, I do believe we have a requirement too to publish an agenda when we're gonna have, you know, a public meeting too, so. Um, I think your opportunity is when we, we're setting our agenda, we do have good of the order, and if there's topics you want to add to the agenda is your meeting. Um, so, and we can add them.
Fred, I'd be interested in knowing what you would like to talk about too.
Okay, for example, we might talk about communications. Um, it's great that we're getting emails um almost on a daily basis. Um, we might want to talk about what criteria would make a better um communication to the public. Uh, for example, we got two on the Bethel Lincoln Roundabout and the road closures. The first one's a very technical map, which had a lot of information. Uh, it was not easily digestible to your average recipient of what exactly was closed and where. Uh, today we got a second email, which was much better. It actually had road clothes symbols on it, so it's very clear. And so just little things like this, um, I know that others of you may have other topics, but we could certainly collect them and announce them and there, this is not an attempt to be non-transparent, but just an attempt for the, it's sort of like coffee for council. Um, we have coffee with council, which is limited to three members, but this would just be council members just talking amongst themselves. I did talk to Jeff Coughlin at Bremerton City Council and I found out that they have an annual meeting that their, their council just sets their own agenda and they run themselves. I know they have a different charter, but it gave me the idea that is our council interested in a meeting like this and it would not be a required meeting. Jay, you would not be required to attend. You'd certainly be welcome. Uh, but you know, it's, it's just another opportunity, because I just get the sense that sometimes there are topics that four or more of us would like to talk about. They aren't getting on good of the order. They're not getting on the agenda. They're not getting on um our work studies, and this is just sort of a, an opportunity.
All right, anything else for the good of the order? All right, we don't have uh an executive session and uh so our business is done and our meeting is adjourned. We'll see you guys next week.
Makes sense. Bye-bye, everybody. See you next week.